Good afternoon and welcome to the 2021 Area Plan for Aging Services Public Hearing for Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia. My name is Kathy McVeigh and I am the President and Board of Directors for Senior Services Southeastern Virginia. Just want to give you a little update and background on senior services. Senior Services, there's one federal agency that kind of oversees all of the 50 states and the units that are within that state. There are 622 area agencies on aging within the nation. So this agency, Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia, was established in 1972. It's an independent 501(c)(3) not-for-profit plan. We are the fourth area agency on aging in the United States of America. There's a staff of 86 people. In that staff, we have 52 full-time employees, 34 part-time employees, 73% of which are female, 72% minority, and 53% of our staff is over the age of 55. This is the jurisdictions that we cover. There's eight jurisdictions with over 2,000 square miles, running from Virginia Beach in Norfolk all the way out to Southampton in Franklin. The mission for Senior Services is to provide older adults and their caregivers with the access to programs and services so that they may live with choice and dignity in their Our value proposition, Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia, is our community's personalized one-stop resource for older adults. The purpose of the public hearing is to present the priorities that we have for physical year 2021 Area Plan for Aging Services. It's an opportunity for professional and public input on the needs of older adults and caregivers. It's ultimately the development of effective area planning priorities. Next, I'd like to bring up Theresa Gonzalez, who is the Chair of our Strategic Planning Committee.
Thank you, Kathy. That was really a very enlightening introduction on what we're going to be doing for our next steps. So, as Kathy had said, my name is Theresa Gonzalez. I'm proud to be a nurse as well as a board member of Senior Services. My role this afternoon would be to briefly address the strategic priorities of Senior Services, being the Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee. So, we have four strategic priorities. First and foremost, we maintain the viability of financial growth, quality, and relevance. We also would like to be the primary resource to older adults and their caregivers, be the recognized thought leader for older adult services, as well as, last but not the least, expand strategic partnerships. Our first strategic goal is to maintain, grow, and improve access to programs and services that are relevant to the needs of a diverse population. Goal number two is to improve the effectiveness of the staff, volunteers, and our board of directors, maintaining the day-to-day efficiencies as well as effective corporate governance. Third goal is to ensure that Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia's impact is sustainable over the long term. Now, as we are going to the new normal, we are considering a new strategic goal, that is to evaluate the need for a crisis/pandemic response section of the Senior Services continuity of operations plan, or NTO. At this time, I would like to introduce our really dynamic and great leader of Senior Services, Mr. Steve Zolos.
Really dynamic, that sets me up a little bit, doesn't it? My name is Steve Zolos. I'm the Chief Executive Officer here at Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia. I want to thank Kathy and Theresa for giving us kind of a high-level understanding of our organization and how we are structured. What I'd like to do is take it from here and start to look at what are the, what are we doing on the ground to influence the health and wellness of older adults right here in Southampton Roads? I want to remind everybody that the real value of our public hearing for our area plan is your input. So if you have questions, or you have ideas, you have thoughts of things that, of things that we might want to add or consider for our strategic planning, please text those or chat them over via Facebook Live. We have about 20 minutes after this portion of the presentation to address those questions, and more importantly, take those questions, ideas, and thoughts into the next phase of our planning for our area plan so we can finalize that with input from you all, whether you're a senior, whether you are a provider of services to seniors, or you're a caregiver, or anybody else who is interested in listening to this event right now. So please, give us your input. It's the most important part of this entire process. So getting back to our Hampton Roads and what we're looking at here, the senior population of Hampton Roads, 60-plus older adults, there's approximately 175,000 60-plus, and of course we serve veterans as well with specific services for veterans, and a good number live alone. The population itself is, in 2018, was just over 200,000 people over the age of 60. And when we stretch that out and look at what the expectations are by 2030, we will have over 300,000 individuals in this category of population. That's a 48% growth rate. That's very significant to understand that over the next 10 years, the fastest-growing segment of our population is going to be 60-plus years old, and that speaks to the need for services like ours and other services that serve older adults here in Hampton Roads. And you'll see why that's important in a minute. It's like ours and others. So, our goal is to improve the population health, keeping our older adults healthy, active, and engaged in our community. This is a chart that is put together by the Healthy Living Center of Excellence, and I just want to briefly go over what they say are the important factors for keeping our seniors healthy and active. It really applies to the population as a whole, but in our perspective, we're looking at 60-plus population here in Southampton Roads. So if you look at the 10% genes and biology, what they're saying there is, what influences your health, 10% of it is your personal biology. How were you born? Are you generally healthy? Are you generally less healthy? That affects 10% of your health and wellbeing. The next 10% in the blue is the clinical care 10%. That means, do we have hospitals? Do we have primary care physician offices? Do we have skilled nursing? Do we have specialists when you need those types of resources to recover? Are those available to you? Very important, of course, in our community, and that accounts for 10%, another 10% of a person's overall health and the health of the population. The remaining 80%, what's now in green, is really where Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia plays a role. So if we look at the last 80% of those factors, including social and economic factors, which represents 40%, physical environment factors, which represents another 10%, and your healthy behaviors, which represents another 30%. So what you see in green is really where our services and our programs come to interact and say, we need to build this infrastructure of health and wellness for our seniors right here in Hampton Roads, and that's really what Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia is all about. We did a little survey, a pre-survey before the area plan, before our area plan meeting here today, and I wanted to give you a little bit of the information that came from that. Of course, we're always looking at the population. We are talking to seniors, we're talking to representatives, we're talking to caregivers throughout the year, but this gave us an opportunity, just through a little survey, make sure we're seeing things properly and hearing things properly. It is not a statistically valid sample, so what I'm going to do is, once I walk through these statistics, I'm going to walk through a few statistics from a survey done at the University of California, San Francisco, that may confirm what we're seeing here. So, just to get through these a little bit, the survey that we did showed that 84% of the people surveyed said they want to stay where they are. They've prepared themselves to live in the home that they're in, or the apartment that they're in, in the community that they're in, and 84% want to stay where they are. Interestingly, 60% are concerned about being able to stay in their home. So it's a real concern to most people who have planned and are ready to stay where they are, are they going to be able to, whether it's because of physical restrictions, whether it's because of transportation restrictions, or whether it's because of financial restrictions, it's a concern for them. 75% would like expansion of on-demand transportation services, which really speaks to a need that we're going to discuss a little bit more as I go on, but a real need for access, and not just to medical appointments, although that's very important, but remember, we're talking about the overall health, the infrastructure of what we need to provide for seniors in order for them to be healthy, active, and engaged in our community. So it also includes, can I get to the beach? Can I get to the arts? Can I go out to a movie? Can I go see my family and friends? As well as, can I get to the doctor? All of these things play important roles in our health and wellbeing. The next statistics, 36% of the seniors in our community live alone. 74% suggest that we need to do more to prepare for the growing senior population, and particular areas of need that were identified are affordable senior housing, transportation, jobs, and affordable medical care. One of the interesting facts that I've been looking for, I've been working with the senior population for over 20 years, and we've been tracking for a long time, when can we move from standard communication processes to digital communication processes? And this is the first time that I've begun to see where a large portion of the senior community says, I need to get connected technologically. In our survey, 50% desire connectivity training. Five years ago, I wouldn't have had 5% saying that. It just wasn't important. Now, and I think one of the opportunities that COVID has brought about is this opportunity for seniors to realize, this can make a difference in my life, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that as we go. COVID effects, no surprise here. Fear, I'm going to tell you, we have seniors who have literally not been out of their house in two and a half months because of the fear of COVID. Isolation, a very serious difficulty for seniors, the effects of being isolated, and we work with seniors to keep them from being isolated throughout the year before the pandemic. Now, the complexities are even more so. And then finally, access to personal care items, and I'll speak to that in a moment as well. I'm not going to go through all the charts from the San Francisco survey, but I do want to hit the highlights of what their findings were. So you can see on the left side of this chart, how have your feelings of loneliness changed due to COVID-19? And in red, you see 43% of the older adults who were surveyed said, I am worse off depression-wise, anxiety-wise, functional impairment-wise, and if you look at the right side of the chart, what rises to the top again, transportation. The next part of the San Francisco survey was social connections. No surprise here that most of the social connection right now is going on telephonically, but we had 79% of the older adults that had minimal or no video interactions, and 43% have minimal internet use as well. One of the things that we found, when we talked to seniors, is there's even confusion along lines of terminology, is social media, internet, is Facebook, social media? There's a little bit of confusion there, so even these numbers, I would say, are a little bit high until we get down to a little bit more detail. And finally, San Francisco survey, areas of need, support with video clinical visits, and this is something that I've heard from our local representative, Jen Kiggins, who is a geriatric nurse practitioner, and speaking with her, mentioned this specifically. We're trying to get older adults to be able to do their medical checkups virtually, but they're spending so much time trying to train folks to get on and get them over the hump of understanding how to utilize the technology, how to trust the technology. So this is a real need that we see here as well. Obtaining medications, 80% are concerned about that. Food insecurity, 20%, and assistance with activities of daily living and instrumental activities of daily living is also between 20 and 60%, depending upon what you're looking at. So lessons learned, and I just want to go here and talk about what we could do better. This was from, again, this is the last slide from the San Francisco survey, and so what they're saying is, first, in relation to isolation, let's facilitate the use of technology among older adults. And secondly, let's make sure we develop strategies that do not solely rely on video/internet technology. Really, really smart. We understand not every older adult is going to be able to grab hold of technology, and we have to serve both populations, those that are ready and those that will not, equally. We need to make sure that we have the capacity to meet their needs, no matter where they're at, but certainly a strategy that moves us towards, let's provide opportunity for these older adults to take advantage of the technologies that are there, very important. Unmet needs, thinking about food insecurity, medications, functional support, and the So I just want to take a step back after those statistics and say, where are we at? What's our perspective, right? We're starting to figure out what the new normal's going to be. First thing we need to keep in mind when we're talking about the older adults here in Hampton Roads, the effects of isolation for older adults is significant and it's ongoing. This is not something that we're going to go, oh, phase three, phase four, reopen, let's go, and seniors are going to be marching back out and getting back in gear and getting engaged in the community again. It's going to take work, work to prove that we're trustworthy, that when they come back into the community, they're safe, and work to get them to reengage and rebuild those networks that are difficult to stay in touch with right now. Transportation remains a critical need. As we look at the growth of the population, transportation is going to continue to be a growing need that we need to keep up with. Personal protection equipment and personal items are immediate needs now. From the perspective of Senior Services, emergency funds are needed at this time to help with specific difficulties as we deal with individual needs of seniors. And then finally, the opportunity exists for technological, for technological training for the senior community. I'm going to shift gears a little bit now. I want to walk through a little bit of the services we provide. If you look at your display, you're going to be able to see pretty much a pretty good list of the services we provide. I've broken them down into seven different areas or departments. I'm not going to go through them all, but I encourage you to read them all so you can understand the breadth and the depth of the services that are afforded to our senior community through Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia. I will go through a few briefly. In our Aging and Aging Disability and Resource Center, information and referrals. This is really the area where we're sitting down in front of seniors, we're working with them one-on-one, whether now it's telephonically or virtually, or in normal times, if you will, sitting down in their home, sitting down at their bedside, whatever it might be, in order to make sure they're getting the services that we need. So we might prefer them to services that we don't have, or give them information about ways to meet their needs through our options counseling program, and of course, our ombudsman program for folks who are in assisted living or skilled nursing facilities, more likely, to make sure they have an advocate, to make sure they're getting the care that they need in the time that they need it. Advocacy and community outreach. We are in regular contact with our legislative representatives, our elected officials, with our city councils, with our mayors and commissions on aging. We are advocating on behalf of seniors, in particular, talking about the value of seniors and how we can build this infrastructure around the senior population. In-home stabilization, meals on wheels, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that. Our organization, our staff, has done just a phenomenal job of shifting gears to be able to meet the needs in the community of seniors that need nutrition services at home. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the partnerships with the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia, Mercy Chefs, the YMCA, and others, and how the partnerships have really come together to effectively serve the senior community. Counseling and application assistance for Medicare, supplemental nutritional assistance, and veterans' direct care. So we have programming specifically for veterans that are older adults to help them navigate their needs as well. Hayden Village Center, that is, we've just opened a historically renovated high school in Franklin, Virginia, and it's just a phenomenal facility. The Bon Secours Mercy Health System has a primary care office there. The Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia has an ongoing food pantry there. We have our service hub for western tidewater operates out of that facility, and we have a community space, a full gym, activity rooms, where we're partnering for intergenerational programming and just starting to build that community. And now that things are starting to open back up with COVID, we're seeing folks come in and renting the spaces. We have 28 affordable senior housing units in that mix. Transportation, we've talked about a little bit already. We do the iRide Medical On-Demand Service. We can fix routes in certain areas, and we do transports to a number of the adult daycare centers here in our communities. And finally, wellness, this is our education programming for our chronic disease, self-management, matter-of-balance, nutrition education, et cetera. So that's kind of an overview of the services that we do. Like I said, take a look at the full chart, give us a call if you have questions about the services we provide, and I should tell you, almost all of the services we pay for, there's no cost to the recipient for most of our services. So this is a real resource for the community that they need to know about. Okay, what happened to us when the pandemic hit and we got the stay-at-home orders and businesses started to close? Well, Senior Services never closed, instead, we transitioned. Our first orders of business was and is to be a trusted source for pandemic safety. That's for our older adults, for our staff, and for our community. So we immediately implemented the PPE and safety policies. We became the source in our area for senior-focused pandemic information, leaning heavily on the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health for key information, but also looking at, what are the scams that are happening now where people are trying to get money from our older adults because of the fear and anxiety that's going on with the pandemic? And of course, our staff transitioned to remote operations. So as you can imagine, this is a big shift, a lot of different things going on based on now we're in pandemic mode. So we transformed our senior center activities to meals and activities at home. Meaning, we used to be, in normal times, if you will, we would bring seniors together so they could socialize, they could have a meal, it was health education and activities, building camaraderie, building networks, and keeping people healthy, active, and engaged. Well, of course, with the stay-at-home order, we were no longer to gathering groups, so we transitioned from coming together in senior centers to taking our meals and activities to the home in order to keep the older adults engaged, keep them networked, and minimize the effect of the isolation. We reinvented our face-to-face education and contact and really started to focus on digital, telephonic, and virtual programming. As you saw on the survey, same with us, most of what we've been able to do is telephonic. However, there are pockets of the older adult community that we're able to connect with We also adjusted our onsite nutrition education. We started a program called Cooking From My Pantry for dieticians online, virtually meeting with the folks who have historically come to our senior centers, basically saying, let's look in your pantry, let's find common things that you have, and let's find creative ways to cook, and creating that interaction, creating that excitement, and creating that connectivity. So that's one example of how we've connected virtually. And our senior companion home visits. Typically, our senior companions go to the home, meet with the seniors, basically become friends. If they like to play cards, they play cards. If they like to go shopping, they go shopping, and the senior companion becomes an empower for the senior to be stay connected and to continue doing the things they love to do. I'd like to, so, and we concluded well-checked phone visits so that seniors don't get isolated and haven't had any contact with anybody for days or weeks or what have you. I'd like to read you a note from one of our folks at the Ocean View Center. Says, "Mr. Zolos and staff, thank you for all you do for us seniors. I am a member of Ocean View Senior Group, and on behalf of myself and others, we would like to give a special thanks to William Jackson. He is always so polite, helpful, and we appreciate the calls very much and all you do. Stay safe, take care, and many thanks." So this is an example of an opportunity that we had. When the seniors couldn't come together and meet at the Ocean View Rec Center or the other rec centers, we began doing well-checked calls, making sure they had everything they need, making sure they have contact with the outside world, and this is just one example of the thanks and appreciation, understanding that we're reaching out in order to help and serve the community. Next, we adjusted our Medicare counseling visits by increasing our telecounseling footprint. We've always been able to do Medicare counseling via the telephone, but it's much more effective when they're right in front of you and you can bring up their application on the screen, et cetera. But it was very important that people get their applications in on time and they can take full advantage of the benefits that they've earned. It's very confusing if you've never done it. I want to read another note that came from someone who received benefits counseling recently. This person said, "I wanted to thank you again for all the help you gave my husband and me. The benefits counselors are wonderful. I know I really got stressed out in trying to find a doctor that accepted my insurance, then all this virus situation, and with my deadline, I felt desperate to get my enrollment finalized. I was afraid your office would have closed. Thanks again for all your help." So again, you start to see the impact. Sometimes we don't recognize, we think, well, it's just Medicare applications that are going in. It's a big deal. It's their health benefits that they're trying to make sure they get complete advantage And just two more, we re-engineered our transportation service to a delivery system for essential medical appointments, meals, information, and personal items. So we recognized we weren't going to be able to utilize our resources, our drivers and our trucks and vans, et cetera, for delivering people, so instead, we turned and said, what can we help with? And we started to deliver meals, and we did maintain the medical appointments for those essential services that included dialysis, included chemotherapy, and wound care. And other than that, we turned everything over to deliver meals, to deliver information, and to deliver personal items. And finally, home-delivered meals. We talked about our transportation doing that. We do home-delivered meals throughout the year, but we're serving over 1,200 meals per day in addition to our regular home-delivered meals, and the only way that we can do that is to work with partners like the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia. Virginia Natural Gas gave us a donation to make sure we had resources to continue the operation of bringing food to the community. Town Band. Town Bank, the United Way of Southampton Roads, Mercy Chefs, local ministries and the YMCA of Hampton Roads. And one of the real benefits that we've seen of having to walk through the difficulties of the pandemic has been the community coming together and finding ways to meet the needs, in particular, of our senior community. And just one last note I wanted to read concerning meals. This person says, these meals are a huge help. I am in my 90s and cannot cook much. The fact that the meals are microwaveable and delicious makes my life a lot easier. So that's the brief on the services that we provide. And in looking to 2021, we're really looking at expanding the services at Hayden Village Center. I told you a little bit about that already. And I do want to let you know about our Healthwise Technology Project. We're teaming up with the Burt Song Foundation, Westminster Canterbury, with Prime Plus Senior Center, EVMS and others to develop a program where we can take seniors along that technology capacity line. And if they've never used technology, be able to move them, bump them up to be using it. If they're a light user, be able to get them to be able to use it for everything that they need and really a customizable training program and implementation program so folks can get their well checks from their physicians, keep in touch with their family and whatever other needs they have. So we're hoping to kick that off in the next month or so. Really exciting project for us and just wanted to make you aware of that. Our 2021 areas of focus, affordable housing through our Hayden Village Center, transportation as always, but with a real emphasis now. Awareness of the value and needs of our older adults. This is an ongoing priority for me to be able to talk to our elected officials, city councils, area agencies on aging, et cetera, and let them know the value of our seniors and how they are an important part of our communities. And that's why we need to build this infrastructure that helps to keep our seniors healthy, active and engaged. Technology for older adults, I just told you about the Healthwise Project we're really excited about. And then, of course, COVID recovery, looking at the effects of isolation, looking at the effects of trust and being able to build that trust and those programs that will allow seniors to reengage in our community as it's wise to do so. So I've got just a couple more slides. I just want to briefly tell you about our budget. You can see from 2017 to 2020, our budget is usually just over $7 million. This year, we were able to add additional funds for COVID response funding of 1.5 million, which takes us up to about 8.5 or so million-dollar budget for this year. If you look at our revenue by source, the blue is the federal resources. You can see that that percentage grew significantly from our approved budget once we got the additional funding for COVID relief. And all the others stayed pretty much the same. Of course, the percentage of state goes down when the percentage of federal goes up. And where does the money go? This is how we allocate our budget each year and this is how we've allocated it for the remainder of 2020. 26% going to the Aging and Disabilities Resource Center, 39% community-based long-term care, 15% transportation and 10% for wellness and lifestyle and the rest split between support and planning services. So that's the, in a nutshell, that's what we do here at Senior Services. That's our plan for this coming year in our area plan right now. It's really important that we get your input so that we can adjust and build our area plan to be as effective as it can. So I'm going to turn, find out, do we have questions and such?
We do, Steve. Ms. James once says that her neighbor has trouble standing and walking. It's hard for him to prepare his own meals at home. He lives alone and some days has no food at home. Can he get help through your agents?
Okay, is there, can we confirm or wait to hear that? Everybody hears that? Is there any way? I'll read it. Okay. "I am a senior who has trouble walking and standing. It's hard for me to prepare meals at home. I live alone and do not have family in the area and some days I do not have food to eat. I need help." Okay, first off, we want to take care of the need for food. That is immediate. All you need to do is call our number. It's 461-9481. Or go to our website again, it's 461-9481. And let them know that you need meals and we will get you on the list to have meals delivered to your home daily. I think we do it two times a week now. The first, early in the week, we deliver four meals to your home and then halfway through the week, we'll deliver six more meals to your home. They're nutritionally balanced, they're what you need. And as you heard from the testimony of the person who sent us the note, they're delicious as well, you'll enjoy them. As far as the being able to stand and get around, that's something that you really need to contact us with the same call. You can ask, I want to talk to an options counselor because these folks will talk to you on the phone and they will let you know, here's the best way to meet your needs. They'll get a little bit more information from you so that they know what your specific needs are and they'll get you the help that you need. So give us a call, let's get you registered on meals and get you help for your sitting and standing. Do we have any additional? I've got something that came in.
These are coming into Facebook here. If an individual's physician says they should no longer be driving, how can they continue to get to the doctor, go shopping and continue to visit in the process?
Yeah, that's a great question. As you know, in the presentation, I talked a significant amount of time about transportation and how that is a concern on so many different levels. So you can't drive anymore and that's something that we all go through at some point. So you're not alone. But under normal circumstances, you would be able to call us if we would be able to provide you transportation to your physician office. At this time, what you might want to do is contact Uber or Lyft, see if they can provide you with their transportation. Or more importantly, find out if your physician can do your well check virtually. Can you get on a computer? Can you have somebody help you get on a computer so that your physician or your nurse can take a look, ask you the right questions to determine if it's necessary for you to come in right now? So of course, they're trying to still maintain a distance and if folks don't have to come into the offices, they're trying to do the checks virtually. So that would be a really good option for you. And again, keep track of how things are changing. Hopefully, in a number of weeks, we'll be able to start providing our transportation again.
Another one coming in. If a caregiver needs support, there's a loved one with dementia right now during times of COVID when there's so much unavailable, where can you or she get assistance with in-home care?
This is a difficult question. I believe first I would contact the Alzheimer's Association. Their numbers, I believe, are still open while their offices are here at the same site as us. They're not housing their offices yet. However, if you can give the Alzheimer's Association a call, they're your best resource for Alzheimer's-related information right off the bat. And what was the second part of my question? I'm sorry.
They're needing help with in-home care. So while Alzheimer's may not be available or they may not be able to get the long-term care from Senior Services.
I would definitely give us a call. You'll talk to our long-term care department. They'll help you analyze what your immediate needs are and they'll be able to tell you which facilities can send people into the home at this point. Some of them with approval from the senior may be able to do that. But of course, there are limitations at this point. The other consideration is the caregivers themselves. Alzheimer's is a great example, but anybody that's caring for a senior, we understand that caregivers already bear a tremendous burden of responsibility for helping their seniors. And now that there's limited help in conjunction with that, it's even more stressful. So I encourage caregivers to give us a call too and be able to find out what kind of respite there is, what kind of assistance there is to try and take some of that load off of our caregivers. I had a question here. My elderly father has shown what we think are symptoms of COVID-19. How do I get him tested? What if I can't get, what if I can't get it tested? There are numbers of sites in our community that you need to contact and make appointments for, but your local CDC store as well as Velocity Urgent Care Centers. You can reach Velocity Urgent Care Centers at velocityus.com and they'll show you where their locations are. You contact that location, make an appointment and get your father over there to be tested.
Steve, I've got another one coming in from Facebook. It's time for me to sign up for my Medicare first-time enrollment. With everything closed, can your agency still help with that?
That's a really good question. I touched base on a little bit in my presentation, but absolutely. We have not closed down the interesting thing or important thing you need to know about our Medicare benefits counseling is that we are not a provider. We're not trying to get you to sign up with one provider versus another. We are strictly looking at your situation, talking to you directly and finding out how you need to sign up and get your application filled out so that you're taking full advantage of the benefits that you've earned and now can take advantage of. So truly, give us a call at 461-9481, ask for benefits counselors. They will begin to talk to you, they'll work with you telephonically to make sure that you can fill out your application because it's very, very confusing and we understand that. And they will also tell you, here's the providers you can talk to once your application is complete to provide your benefits through.
Steve, here's another question coming in. My mother is very lonely. She's shutting herself during this time. She's showing signs of depression because she's a little herself and can't get out of the house. I'm afraid to visit, what can I do something?
This is a really good question because here's a concerned family member or caregiver that's saying, I'm not sure what we can do. We understand, as we saw on the surveys, here's somebody that's worse off because of the COVID epidemic and what can we do? The first thing is take the initiative. As a family member or a caregiver, reach out. If it's only by phone, go ahead, reach out. Remember, there are guidelines to be able to safely interact with people, just like we're here. We're not presenting, we have our masks on, we've got our six-foot distancing, et cetera, so that we can interact safely even with a few people. So I wouldn't be overly concerned about visiting as much as visiting properly. And then, if you can connect virtually, if you can teach them how to get onto Facebook Live or Zoom or what have you in an easy way and they have that capacity, take the opportunity to train them and get them involved and then have regular contact. And if it happens to be an older adult that isn't going to move into the technological realm, let's go old school. Let's write him a letter every day, right? Let's stop by and just drop off a meal. That kind of thing where we just maintain that outreach of love and care to make sure people know they're not forgotten and they're not left behind and they don't have to sit in a room all day long without any interaction.
So John just wrote in on Facebook that his father is in a rehab center locally. Because of COVID, everyone's quarantined in there. He can't go visit him. His father's complaining that he's not getting his breakfast till almost noon time. How can we help them?
Okay, so we had someone call in or text in and tell us that they have a loved one in a facility, a skilled nursing facility, and they can't visit and the their loved one is suggesting that he's not getting food on time and maybe there's some issues with the care. In which case, we have our ombudsman program, which is an advocate for folks who are in facilities to make sure they are getting the care that they need. So again, you can call us, let us know the situation. We'll connect you with the ombudsman and he will make a point of finding out, making sure that the care that they're giving is appropriate, that the facility knows that someone's looking out for your loved one. And it's a real important service for us now. Now that families are a little bit disconnected from being able to visit in the facilities. So really take advantage of our ombudsman program in that vein so that we can get help out to the facilities and have somebody checking on your loved one and making sure that they're advocated for.
That's all on Facebook right now.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for attending today. We will still receive questions if you have, I think we have one more slide here actually. If you have questions, ideas, things that you need us to consider that maybe you're seeing in the senior community that we haven't talked about or maybe not seen, write us, call us, let us know. In the next two weeks, we're going to be gathering our final information and then putting together our final area plan for 2021. Again, I want to thank you all for attending. I hope you learned a few things about our senior community and our senior infrastructure and certainly about Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia. We're here to serve our community, our caregivers, our older adults as well as our community at large. So thank you.